Good afternoon, I would like to call the meeting, work session meeting on February 2nd of the State Board of Education to order. We do have live streaming available through the State Board of Education website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. And Denise, would you please call the roll?
Patricia Tim?
Yes.
Rachel Wise?
Yes.
Maureen Nichols?
Yes.
Patrick McPherson?
Yes.
Molly O'Halloran?
Present.
John Whitzel?
Yes.
Lisa Fricki?
Yes.
Patsy Cojones?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bloomsted?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of this room, on the south side of the door. I did give you the live web streaming, and I need to remind everyone to engage their microphones before speaking, and turn them off when you're done speaking, and please make sure that your personal cell phones are shut off. So we will begin with item two, Board Reports, Dates and Discussion Items, and meetings with participation in joint meetings with policy partners. Where have we been in January? Who wants to be first? Molly?
You all knew that I went to the Stakeholder Engagement Meeting in Atlanta, and I wanted Maureen to know that we really missed her, but we really got-
Due to weather.
We got a lot, we got a lot done, and Donlin Rice is just a trooper. She flew, she was with her family, flew in to be with us, and I think we accomplished a lot. Arvin Frazier was there, and we, we had a great table for discussion, and we will be having further reports because our whole team was unable to get together, so I'm not going to take your time, but I do want to just share some important thoughts. As we continue with our stakeholder engagement, it was really interesting because it is about meaningful conversation, and it's when we go to our groups, we don't go in with, well, we have this on our agenda, and this is a report we're going to file, and we're just going to check the box. They really talked about how when you're at a meeting with your stakeholders, that you listen and incorporate good ideas in the plan, and then get back to your stakeholders and say, "Thank you for contributing, here's where your piece is part of our plan now," and that if you're going to have this meaningful engagement, as ESSA continues to enroll, that we involve not just state entities and local entities, and always ensure that our most vulnerable children receive the quality education they deserve. And as I said, we all were not there, but it was a fantastic experience, and as our group comes together, I'll get back to you.
Thanks, Molly. Rachel, do you want to talk about Open Sky?
Yeah, January 6th, there was an Open Sky panel discussion, and the panel discussion was made up of previous speakers of the legislature, and chairs, and members of the Appropriations Committee, and they just shared some of the past practices that have occurred, and prioritization processes that have occurred during lean fiscal times, and so that was an outstanding-
There have been others.
Outstanding discussion, very appropriate. I did have a chance to visit Mandela in Omaha, and it is one of our private schools that we have approved, and if you have a chance, it's great to go. Susan Tuie, Dr. Susan Tuie is the principal there, and just a lot of energy, and just great place to go visit, so if you get a chance, you might want to go do that. The NASB Legislative Conference last, I don't know, the 22nd, Sunday evening, the 22nd, Jeff Cole presented around extended learning opportunities, and they had a great panel discussion. We've got some legislative action that we then also talked about relative to that on the 23rd, and we'll talk about today, but again, just that reminder of the importance of extended learning opportunities. Just one other thing, then I did have a NASB Preplanning Conference Call for the Public Education Positions Committee, I am chairing that NASB Committee this year, and we will be looking at intersecting with our partners on the Governmental Affairs Committee on possibly several public education positions. I'll report more later on that.
Thank you. There were quite a few of us that attended, first five luncheon on January 10th, and again, we had former speakers of the legislature spoke, and talked about past crisis that they had had to deal with, and it's truly amazing, I don't think there's probably ever been a year that there wasn't a crisis of some kind in the legislature, but everyone seemed to weather it, and learn from it, and was, was kind of encouraging to know that there was, it was, it was a nice group of people, very nice group of people, and I know, Lisa, you were there as a new board member, what did you think?
I was very impressed with what they had to say. I learned, and listened, and afterwards, I had a chance to ask questions of several of them individually, and they were very gracious to answer my questions, so I appreciated that. Thank you.
Maureen?
I'd just like to share that one of the greatest takeaways from that luncheon was when former Senator Flood talked about the thing he learned most, and I can't remember which House Speaker it was he went into to learn it from, but that you're not always going to please everyone, and that you are going to make mistakes, just plain not make everybody happy, and that it's okay to say, "I'm sorry." And I've carried that with me ever since, and he said, when he learned how to do that, the anxiety of everything was so releasing for him, and I think as educators, as parents, as board members, you know, we're all going to be confronted, and we need to learn to say, "It's, I'm sorry."
I might have made a mistake.
I might have made a mistake.
Yeah, that's true.
I also got to attend the first five luncheon, and I guess the biggest thing I had was the opportunity to visit with a couple of our state senators, which was important, I thought. I also had the opportunity to, a little less education related, but attend the formal swearing-in at the, at the Douglas, the federal courthouse in Omaha of our new congressman from the second district, Don Bacon, so that was a nice opportunity, and there were a number of elected officials there, so I was pleased to be one of them.
Good. John?
I was honored to visit a few of our stakeholders this past month. I met with the Omaha Symphony Education Programs, where they briefed me on the programs. They were, if you will, instructing students from four years old to high school in regards to the arts and music. Also, again, like the first five Nebraska luncheon, that was a very, very, if you will, learning experience, where we all walked away with something, so thank you very much, First Five, and Jen Goetmirel Mueller, so thank you very much. Attended the Midlands Foundation Ceremony, where several educators and administrators were honored at this event. Also, I cannot give my most heartfelt, I meant the most heartily congratulations to the participants at the preparing the next generation of STEM champions. African-American leaders were recognized for their contributions to STEM programs for our young people. They, if you will, awarded the senior members, teachers, and mostly the students for their contributions. It was quite an affair. Also, the SAC Museum had a STEM's presentation for students and visitors alike. In this presentation, they presented the black hole, the space black hole, and there was quite a bit of interest by our techie young people in regards to, to that event. The Literacy Center of the Midlands had a student achievement and open house, which included a GED graduation, and the Literacy Center just opened up, if you will, with a new executive director and a new mission, and their services include GED prep, adult basic education, ESL, computer literacy, and employment readiness, and I was joined by Julie Bauer and some other NDE staff that was there for the presentation. Had an opportunity to talk to John Thompson yesterday with the Nebraska Association of the Gifted, we talked about a few issues, and working with Rebecca Miller at the Fix Lexia Association for possible coordination efforts with Educational Service Unit Number Three. And lastly, I'd like to thank NASB for their invitation for that presentation a couple weeks ago. Thank you.
Good. Now, Patsy, I believe you went to the Martin Luther King Breakfast, do you have anything about that?
I did, I went to the Martin Luther King Breakfast, and I had been several times, I had been several times before, so I was pretty used to the process, but I thought this year especially, the educators that spoke were particularly poignant, especially Steve Joel, I thought his speech was one of the best speeches I'd heard in a long time, talking about everything that needs to come about for our kids in education right now. I also went back to the legislature for a second day to the Education Department, and spent the afternoon there. I kind of liked that, I think I liked, I liked policy. Anyway, who would have ever known that? But at any rate, they were discussing the Nebraska School Activities Association, and I've worked with them for many, many years, and-
Oh, yeah.
-kids who are homeschooled, and how should they be included in those activities, and it reminded me of something I said while I was out campaigning, what's good and right for kids, and so I, I was glad to hear them saying that they were going to reduce the minimum, the number of classes that they had to take, perhaps, so that those kids could become involved in extra activities, and I think that's important. That's going to happen through the NSAA, I think, instead of through the legislature, so. Then I spent, oh, I don't know, about two hours with a group of people, and I won't give you all their names, but anyway, we, the people, who are very, very interested in civics education, and they got ahold of me and said, "Will you come and listen to us, and maybe you'll come to one of our events and listen to that, and see what you think about how this teaches civics to students in a new and exciting way, and not just in a way where you memorize it and then throw it back up, a way that you have very creative experiences with it." They were super nice, and very interested in the education of kids and civic involvement. I'm pretty interested in civic involvement right now as well.
Well, good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask you one last-
Yes, you may.
Sorry for interrupting you. Thank you for allowing me. Just want to remind everybody, this month is African-American Heritage History Month. There's lots and lots of activities and events going on this month throughout the state, so please, please take advantage of them.
Thanks for the reminder, John. That is very, very important. Okay, we'll go on to number two. This has to do with requests for meeting attendance, and I have a list of things that are going on in the next couple of months that people have asked to attend to, and then we'll see if there's anything else also. There's going to be an education conference, the 8th and 9th of February, in Kearney, NASB, and right now, I see that John Whitzel, Lisa Fricki, and Rachel Wise are going, so we've got that taken care of. There's a Nebraska Braille Challenge, and I think you may have received an invitation in the mail to that. That's the 8th of February in Nebraska City, and I don't know if anyone is going to attend, but if you do, I'm sure it would be. Maureen?
I'd just like to speak on that. Lily Larson and I attended that last year, and it was incredible, just to be able to watch the students, how they participate, the things that they do, to watch the parents that were there, to see them receive awards at the end of the day, and I'm certainly not able to make it, but if there's anyone that could make it, it's, it's a wonderful experience.
Okay, good. We have our second Nebraska Early Childhood Workforce Development Commission meeting coming up, the 15th of February, and I will be attending that. I've also been asked to speak to, oh, and you put this, you wrote it out for me, thank you. It's called STANCE, and it's a group of administrators from across the state. It's kind of like NERCSA, only it's, it's superintendents from, administrators from, like, B and A schools rather than the C and D schools, and STANCE stands for Schools Taking Action for Nebraska's Children's Education, and that's 23rd of February. It's held here in Lincoln, and I've been asked to speak at that. The NAG Conference is coming up, and I have John Whitzel, and Patrick McPherson, and Patsy Cojones attending that, and Rachel, you're going to a conference in legislative conference?
Yes, the NASB Legislative Conference will also have a joint meeting between the Public Education Position Committee and the GAC Committee as well.
Good, good. Okay, does anyone know of any other meetings that they, Lisa?
I don't think you read my name under the NAG Conference in Omaha.
Oh, okay.
And so I had requested to go to that. Thank you.
All right, we'll get that taken care of.
I, I don't believe I've seen any, I've seen anything on that Social Studies Summit. I might be interested in going to that.
It's updated on the e-meetings.
Oh, is it? Okay, I'll take a look.
If you look there.
Yeah, Corey mentioned that this morning, so yeah, that would be, we'll check on that for you. Molly?
And I would like to go to the NASB Legislative Conference, too.
Okay.
And then Maureen, too.
Okay, and then, Maureen, are you going to go to that one as well?
Yes. That'll make up for what I didn't get to in Atlanta.
Okay, all right, well, good deal. Very good. Thank you all for taking time out of your personal lives to attend these other meetings.
I have a couple more.
Okay, and then, yes, Commissioner?
So, the NERCSA Conference on March 23rd and 24th, and we, typically what happens is I go out and I speak at that conference, and then we have either a panel discussion or a presentation, so those of you who are wanting to attend that, I would also ask that you would participate in presenting at that conference, and I don't have all the exact times yet, but that's, that's one thing coming up, so.
Can you let us know when it is?
Yeah, it's March 23rd and 24th, but I think it'll be the 23rd will be the actual presentation timeframe.
And where will that be held?
It's in Kearney.
In Kearney, yeah.
And I know, Molly, you attend sometimes, and-
I'm going to a Daughters of American Revolution State Conference, so I'm sorry. I'm already-
This is our Nebraska Rural Schools that meet, and they always meet in Kearney, so if you can go, please let Denise or Laura know, and we'll make the arrangements for us. Yeah, okay, another one?
And then, I believe you all have letters, and I don't know if we handed another one around for the FFA convention, which is-
Oh, yeah, I got that, too.
That'll actually be Thursday, April 6th, and Friday, April 7th, and I believe I'm asked to speak in the breakfast meeting, and then you're asked to be able to be there to help present awards, those of you who can anyway.
Yes.
But after, it'd be after the board meeting, yeah, so, well, I say after the board, but I think it says it starts at 1:30, so, on, on the Friday, April 7th, so.
So we'll, we'll keep an eye on that, and kind of check, and have everybody see how agenda goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I know a couple of you have done that before. Yeah, I knew, Molly, you had, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on that. Okay, let me see, and you have in your materials the monthly board travel expense report, so you can, can check that out. Okay, Commissioner, it's your turn. The consent agenda and rules and all of those things.
So certainly, just like normal, the process, if you've reviewed consent agenda items, and if you had any, first of all, any questions, we can organize staff to address those questions for you. Also, if you would like to pull any of those items off a consent agenda, you can fill out the pink form and, and give it to, or put it in that box, or give it to Scott to record that, and we'll, we'll go forward with that, that side. Also, I have next the report on rules, and I know we have a couple rules kind of on the agenda today already for action, which probably don't have to go into great detail on, because we'll hear about those in a little bit, but there are some rules that have been heard. We had a hearing, I think I let you know that back, or at least maybe we talked about, Rule 21 was up for hearing, and, and the hearing date is set as, as February 27th. Rules that have been approved include Rule 8, approved by the Governor and Secretary of State, and Rule 51, and our last revision of that rule, so. With that, I'll turn it over to Donlin for her presentation.
Thanks. This is kind of something we just talked about, but one of the things that you asked me to do at the legislative retreat was to put together an annual calendar of meetings. That is attached under my report, and even from the things that have been talked about, now I've missed a couple, but it's meant to be only those annual meetings, like, for instance, the Social Studies Summit, it's going to be very worthwhile, but it's a one time, it's not an annual, so the parameters I used is, will these be something that happen every year? And then Laura will, now that I have most of the dates for this coming year, she's going to be entering those on e-meetings as well, just a little notation, but you can look ahead, all of the student organization conferences are on there, all the NASB, so on and so forth, so it's just meant to be as a resource for you, that we will update. If you look under my Board Priorities and Policy Research item-
Do we get the e-meeting, or the tools?
It's in the e-meetings, and it's an attachment.
So the tool attachment.
If you just, if you're, if you're following along in e-meetings, under, it's up in the right-hand corner, it says Attachment. It's on there. I can also get you a hard copy, but it'll be kind of an evolving document.
Did you all find, find it?
I can help you find it later, too, or I can be happy to print off a hard copy. But it's item 3.3, Board Priorities and Policy Research. If you click on the item, it'll show up on the right-hand side. And then, a couple of things to mention, next month, you have been invited by the Board of NASCD, the Nebraska Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, to join them for lunch, and talking with President Tim, I think we've decided we'll do that on Thursday, and we will, you've done this every year, met with their leadership, that's the Curriculum Directors Group, the leaders from around the state, and that will be at the NCSA building, so we'll time that so that we can have our committee meetings and go meet with that group, and, and talk leadership and curriculum and supervision. And then already, NASB has done a call for proposals, that is their Fall Conference for Nebraska Association of School Boards. We're putting in a placeholder, saying, "Yes, the State Board wants to be involved," and we'll let you discuss that at a later date of what you might want to do. And then, Commissioner, I didn't have a chance to run this by you, the Stakeholder Engagement Meetings that we will be holding as an agency, is, get that date out to all the board members. That's in your presentation? Okay. And also, as Molly was saying, the Stakeholder Engagement Meeting, we will be getting that group together of those of us that went, and those of us that couldn't go, so we'll also working with our ESSA group on that, on what we learned there, so, that's all I have. Thanks.
Yes. Commissioner's going to talk to us a little bit, give us an update of the ESSA.
And Dr. Frazens is joining him.
Yeah, sorry, I was going to try to do this from my computer, but I might not have been smart enough, so I feel smarter up here, I guess, I don't know. Actually, I get more help up here. So, first of all, I wanted to be able to present, to use some of the efforts and work of our ESSA team, and some of our next steps on that, and it would have been all the better if Matt Huesman and Ron Azali weren't also in New York today, because they would be here to present to you. They're actually working with a group that I'll describe a little bit more on some of those efforts, and I wanted Dr. Frazens to join me as well, because there's some, some efforts underway that, that she's also involved in, that can give you an update on that front, and then obviously, the NASB work that just happened, so there's a lot of, a lot of activity on that front. I will also tell you, there's also some uncertainty going on around the timing of ESSA regulations, just, I think, just this week, the announcement came out that the U.S. Department of Education and the new administration are pulling back all of the rules and regulations to implement ESSA, and will be going into a new process, so they pretty much have put on hold a number of things, so there is some uncertainty, I think the advice that we continue to get is keep working on your plan, keep doing your stakeholder engagement, keep engaging the public generally, and so that's, that's certainly what we intend to do. Obviously, a lot of the, the work, when we started thinking about the ESSA plan as, as a whole, is the notion of how we align that to both AQuest, and what we've talked about so much on, on that front, as well as the strategic plan, I think now, is absolutely critical to how the ESSA plan comes together, and that we use the measures and metrics that we've identified as important to Nebraska. Certainly, there are key components that, that are required, this notion of long-term goals, and, and how we, how we go about academic assessment, how, how we tie together accountability support and improvement for schools generally. The notion of supporting educators to be effective is absolutely critical to our work, and as we've discussed so often, just supporting students, wherever our students are, wherever they happen to be, that we're doing that work effectively. We, we established last fall, I guess would be about appropriate, a core writing team within the agency, and really, I should call it a core thinking team, more than a writing team. They've, they've tried to gather information from across the agency, look at what's happening in strategic planning, tie that together with what we've done within AQuest, think through those systems, and B, I, I, sometimes I have to sit down with them and be visionary, right? I want them to be visionary, because we can always kind of, you know, take a block of ideas and whittle away something that could be a beautiful, you know, piece of art by the time we're done, and I want them to, to be able to keep doing that work. They meet, they meet, obviously, weekly, we have an advisory group that's a little bit broader within the agency, that, that makes sure that we tie together the, the various teams' activities, so we get that work aligned. It's actually helping us quite a bit to have our strategic plan in place, because now we also have weekly conversations about the strategic plan, and how we're going to get work accomplished across the agency at, at this point in time on, on alignment there. So there's a lot of conversations and moving parts, and very deep, good conversations that, that help move that forward. Obviously, we're working to think about how we do stakeholder group engagement and, and move that forward. There's kind of been a process in place where they're trying to get preliminary concepts onto paper, so they can be shared at least as concepts with others, to start to engage them in a, in a bit more detailed way, and we anticipate sharing. Some of that, again, it's more detailed in March, with the idea that, that becomes our launching point for, for specific stakeholder engagements that I'll talk about, I think, quite soon here. Obviously, some of these next steps, I talked through it, I can get ahead of myself, I guess, but the key concept development that we have going on now, our presentation to the, to the board next month, the plan development and kind of analysis timeframe that we, that we would hope, and listening to stakeholders, and then incorporating that within, within a plan. Again, these timelines might get changed because of what I just mentioned to you, but, you know, really, there's been an opportunity to have a couple key folks, Reg Lacte and Amy Sturinsky, who were here last May, that, Reg, of course, works with NASB, but they've had an opportunity to participate in some early conversations about what the peer review process looks like, so we're able to gather that information through the various partnerships, including with NASB, and, and also through another engagement we've had in working with CCSSO and the Wallace Foundation, which is, we'll go on next. We put legal review, there's constantly going, well, what are the requirements that we need to be making, sure are part of that process as well. So I'll dive a little bit deeper into the stakeholder engagement that we, that we're planning, obviously, this notion of, I, I, I don't know how to best describe it, other than to keep saying it, the strategic planning process sets the direction that we want to go as a state, and you all know that, and I think it's important to articulate, that, that our efforts really, with the strategic planning process, and also what, what we've done over the last several months, relative to thinking about how that comes together into, into work plan, is really driving a lot of conversation. is really driving a lot of conversations around the ESSA plan as well. That we think about the kind of, it started this kind of phase of going, well, what's the, what are the moving parts that need to tie together? And I know when Matt and Ron reported back in, I think it was November, that was a bit of that, the middle of that timeframe. Obviously, we're in that kind of plan writing and concept writing. Part of the effort between March and May with an anticipation of a submission in September. Again, those dates could change a little bit based on what the new rules and regs might look like. We really anticipate having a lot of different and continue to have a lot of different engagements. We've had what I'll call kind of less formal engagements where different groups are talking to us about ideas. And we've had meetings and opportunities to be in front of different stakeholder groups on that front. We anticipate what we're going to call listening to our stakeholder sessions in March, trying to use our other communications tools to engage folks. There is a website with ESSA information up on our front page of our website, for instance, and other things that we can anticipate using. But that's a lot smaller than I remembered it being. Sorry about that. There have been a lot of different, so this is a laundry list of things, but I'll just kind of highlight a few. I mean, even as you go back into administrator days, we were trying to be thoughtful about starting to listen to stakeholders. But there've been a lot that's happened through our various organizations, CCSSO certainly, also with NASB. And then we've been invited in a couple other arenas, and this is where I hope to have Dr. Friesen talk on a couple of these fronts. The first one was, I think, brought to us by CCSSO, but there was a partnership from the Wallace Foundation that included the National Governors Association and National Urban League. And I'm probably missing groups that were engaged in that. And so locally, then we had OPS engaged in that, the Urban League of Nebraska engaged in that, and the department. And so we've had regular conversations with those folks at a local level, but also nationally, that's where Ron and Matt happened to be as of today. We were one of five states, well, excuse me, I think there were five other states, one of six states that were included in that initial grant. They brought in another, several states anyway, for this engagement in New York City. But it was actually, I was able to go in September, it was actually a good grounding of where other states happened to be and what their work was looking at. And it made me feel actually quite comfortable that where a lot of other states were struggling, we gained a number of contacts in other states and tried to help figure out where that was going to go. I think it's also been true, I don't know if I have the NASB, I think I have the NASB one on here, but I think that was the intention of the NASB group. By the way, I kept hearing that people didn't make it. That was the bad ice storm, by the way. That was when people were trying to travel. And so those that, I think Ron was supposed to make it there as well as Maureen. So anyway, we'll gather up with that conversation as well. But I know Dr. Friesen is actually, has been invited to the Aspen Education, I don't know if that's the right term.
Aspen Senior Congressional Education Staff Network Retreat. Doesn't that sound good? But anyway, they did contact me about a week ago and asked, they interviewed us because they wanted to know where we were with our ESSA plan and what were some of our thoughts about it. Myself, Ron Ozalay, and Matt Huesman were in that phone interview. And as a result, I was contacted last week to ask if I would participate in Early Lessons from ESSA, State and District Perspectives on Accountability and School Improvement as part of their faculty. And so it's kind of a hot three-day-behind closed-door session with those senior congressional education staff to talk about what's really happening and to inform them as they can work with congressmen, so.
And by the way, I reached out to Reg Lacte at that point because we were kind of debating, well, is this worth going to, not worth going to? I reached out to Reg and Reg said, oh, absolutely, you better be there. So I thank Dr. Friesen for doing that and lending her expertise to that conversation. You know, we're trying to use other feedback from stakeholders, including what happened last fall with our career education groups, right? That's been important feedback. And if you look at that, we just have in draft form some of that particular feedback report, and it's remarkable feedback. And so, in fact, we're going to try to model some of those approaches to gaining feedback in this process and tie those things together. And I think that will be important for us. I swear this gets smaller as I go. Sorry about that. So the listening to stakeholder sessions that we'll have in March. But we've tried to go outside of the box relative, we have a lot of the normal stakeholders that we hear from often. And I think a lot of credit to Ron and Matt for thinking through other groups and having conversations. What I'll tell you is if there are other groups that you think we can, should engage, we want to be intentional about engaging them for conversation. So I know there's many, many different folks to engage. I think there's, the healthcare sector, Rachel and I had talked about some things with the healthcare sector. Actually, Molly and I had talked about that as well, and finding ways that we have those in there. So this is not at all a comprehensive list, but just some that we believe are going to be critically important to deep conversations there. Yes?
When I look at the list that you've included, I'm just wondering if maybe, have you thought about involving someone that works with adjudicated youth, that at risk segment?
No, I think it's great because we actually have quite a few projects underway right now. But absolutely to include the, what we've called our Systems Involved Youth, right? Our Systems Involved Students across the state and the data, a lot of work that we have going on with HHS and others. But I think it's a great point that that has to be part of that conversation, so.
Yeah, Commissioner. I think also if you could be thinking about, these are, many of these are, you know, somewhat statewide, but also mostly metro area. I think if we can do similar kinds of organizations throughout the state, so as you look at those regions, you make sure you capture, you know, really an understanding. And many of these are like service providers, nonprofit organizations, making sure also that we expand that to a host of other groups.
I think, just as you said, that I think one of the things that might be helpful, and I'm saying this out loud and it's being recorded, so that's good too. No, we ought to interview each one of you as board members, I think, for a set of groups and your connections. Because I think that would be quite logical that we would do that. So we'll try to have someone from our team do that with you because I think there's a whole list of things that, you know.
Commissioner, as you were, we were going through the meetings that were going to be available, maybe some of our student leadership groups like FFA and DECA and future business leaders, some of their executive boards.
Yeah, great point, so.
And along those lines, since you mentioned the stakeholder engagement roundtables that were held this fall, maybe even getting some of those lists, there may be value of some of the people that were there to carry over to this as well.
Yeah, no, excellent point, so. So I'm creating all sorts, Ron and Matt should have been here to defend themselves. But no, I think it's exactly, exactly the type of feedback that they also want. These are sessions that are so far set up and the timing of these, I think, well, I hope that because I have this list, that they actually do have all those details there. Given the timing of the, what may change in timing, I also want to think about other things that we could be adding or considering to add to this particular list. But this is our first list at least of how we have some set up across the state with, again, some intention to inviting broad sets of folks. And then we had a great conversation the other day about, I also want open forums that allow folks to come in. So we've got an additional, I think, challenge because you never really know how many people just come to open forums. And also, if you don't invite people, you're afraid maybe no one shows up. So it's the challenge that we want to make sure that we're doing that well. And it's similar to public feedback for us, even as, you know, sometimes we think, well, no one showed up for an hearing. Well, often if they don't know, how are they going to know to show up?
Would it be appropriate for us to attend the ones in our area?
Yes, absolutely.
Would you give us, send us a notification on that so we can make sure that they're available?
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll get this off to you as part of that as well, so. I think I'm probably repeating myself, but the kind of the key dates as we know them right at this moment with the notation at the end that, well, we're not sure that that's all the key dates. So one key date on here, though, is also our AQuest conference, quite important, where we normally have our traditional school folks engaged in conversations around what the accountability system is and what we're doing with data and measurement on that front, so. So I'll end with our mission, but the reality for us going forward, tying all these kind of loose-end pieces or things that might feel occasionally like loose ends, they're actually all connected to one another. Almost every conversation we have is connected to that. And I see that, obviously, I hope that everything that we're doing is tied ultimately to our mission. And that's very much our intention, and I'm pleased to see the efforts underway.
When you look at listening to our stakeholder on Page 10, when I look at the different places like mine, Scottsfield and North Platte, I did want to let you know that the issues have contacted me and they would like to do some remote sites where people that can't show up cannot participate. And like Valentine is usually the third big area, and that's far away from Scottsfield and North Platte. So could you kind of work the issues?
And I think there's been some, I'll double check, but I think there was some intention to try to have that available for different locations too, so.
Yeah, I would concur with Molly because we miss a lot of our larger communities. You know, like in my area, you've got Norfolk, but you're not capturing South Sioux City, you're not capturing Fremont, you're not capturing Columbus. And then within that, we're not capturing necessarily, you know, many of the next size, smaller communities. So thinking through strategic ways, that would be great to have a broader representation of the areas we represent.
Yeah, no, that sounds good. All right. Because John, John gave me the time signal. That's why he jokes with me all the time. Wrapping up, Matt.
We will move on to our Standing Committee reports. And just a little change in order. We're going to move the Legislative Standing Committee to the bottom of the list after Budget and Finance so that they have extra time if they need it to discuss. Because I know you've had some real long conversations and I want to give you time to speak to that. Okay, our first one is Teaching and Learning Domain. Maureen.
Thank you, Madam President. The Teaching and Learning Committee, we met for a couple of hours today, and we had one action item on the agenda. And the item is to adopt the proposed revisions to Rule 24, which is the Regulations for Certificate Endorsements. And the committee members were informed on the proposed revisions. And staff members Pat Madsen and Sharon Cat are going to share this information with the entire board. So if they would come up.
Thank you, Maureen. And for the record, I am Pat Madsen. I work in Adult Program Services. And one of our responsibilities is to review Rule 24 endorsements for certificates. This year, we have a rather short list of changes to the rule. The first endorsement is work-based learning. The former name was Cooperative Education Diversified Occupations. This is one of the first of the Career Education endorsements to be revised and will be incorporated into the Career Education endorsements. It has changed from a six-hour supplemental endorsement to a three-credit hour supplemental endorsement. And the guidelines have been updated to reflect the Nebraska career readiness standards. The next one is Religious Education. We simply added grade levels. It was, has been always a K-12 endorsement. We added grade levels PK six and 712 at the request of several institutions so that those that are getting a 712 endorsement, for example, could also pick up the 712 Religious Education endorsement if they preferred. And then the School Counselor endorsement, we have eliminated the two-year teaching requirement in that endorsement. And as we did research, we found out that Nebraska was one of maybe two or three states that still required two years of teaching before you could obtain that endorsement. And we also have created an option for those that are from other counseling professions to obtain a School Counselor endorsement. They would have to take not only the Masters in Counseling with the emphasis in school counseling, but also they would have to complete a minimum of 12 hours of professional education coursework and human relations and special education, just like everyone who's seeking an endorsement in Nebraska has to do. So, and then with the Superintendent endorsement, we simply looked at the language in both Rule 21 and Rule 24 and tried to get them to align better. So no major revisions there, it was just an alignment in language. We also clarified the intent regarding the provisional special education endorsement so that those that have that endorsement show progress toward obtaining their regular special education generalist endorsement. And we updated Appendix C, which is the list of practice assessments that are accepted in Nebraska. And then we also did some cleanup in the rule with the language to enhance the consistency and numbering. So any questions? Yes, John?
Thank you very much. In regards to the School Counselor, did we eliminate the two-year requirement because we're short of counselors, if you will?
We hope that that might help a little bit. I don't know that that will, we also have several school counselors from other states who come and try to get a Nebraska certificate. And many times, they don't have the two years of teaching, and so they are not eligible for a school counseling endorsement in Nebraska. And so hopefully, that will allow a few more people to come in. I don't know that it will alleviate the shortage, but it should open the door for a few more counselors to be endorsed in Nebraska.
Are we still critically short of school counselors in the state?
It depends.
Depends, I understand.
I think it depends not only on geographic location, but the available pipeline.
Okay, thank you very much. And second quick question in regards to the three semester hours for the work-based learning. Does that apply to permits or just certifications?
Just certification.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel?
Pat, could you speak to just a little bit of some of the discussion that we had of the complexity of whether there's a shortage or whether or not there's also limitations that we've imposed because of maybe things in Rule 10? And can you just describe a little bit of the complexity of understanding whether there's an actual shortage or other factors impacting our demand?
Rule 10 does require that all districts have a school counselor. And depending on the size of the district, that has to be either a half-time or a full-time position depending on how many students there are. There is not a lot of flexibility allowed because of Rule 10 like there are with some other teaching endorsements. Is that what you wanted, what you were thinking about?
Are there any other questions from board members? Committee members, any other concerns, anything we missed?
The list will be longer next year. There are many more revisions planned for next year.
As a result of the information presented, the committee recommends adopting the proposed Rule 24 revisions, which we will vote on tomorrow. And if there's no other further discussion on this action item, we'll let you go, Pat. Thank you.
Thank you.
The remainder of the agenda in our Domain Committee included updates from staff members on the work related to the Teaching and Learning Domain, which included Assessment and College and Career Ready. The department is hosting a Social Studies Summit, February 14th and 15th in Lincoln. Lisa and I, I believe, are planning to attend, or at least have interest in attending the summit. And if anyone else here on the Board is interested, please contact Cory. And if anyone else here on the board is interested, please contact Corey Epler about that. Committee members, is there anything else you want to add to this report? Seeing none, I'll turn this back to the missing president.
Well, thank you very much, Maureen. Thank you very much. Molly, in regards to you, would you brief us on the AQuest Student Success and Access Domain Committee report, please?
All right. Student Success and Access Domain, we, first of all, had two visitors with David Patton and Mark Feldhausen, and I just wanted to share from our perspective, this is the learning community, and I know they came to your other, the other side, too, right? So, I look forward to further conversations in regard to their plans, and also, we just brought up some points, they're doing a great job, but we wanted measurable measurements and accountability, and I think we gave some suggestions that they did find helpful. We have two action items. Two Point One is Adopt Proposed Revisions to Rule 19. This is Regulations Regarding School Enrollment, and this is about the Homeless Act. And it's supposed to establish stability for these students, and we added more general requirements, and we are adding a dispute resolution that allows a child to attend the School of Record during the entire process. We found out that these homeless kids would lose education if they were switching schools. And also, transportation is provided by the School of Record. And then there's just other little changes in the state statute. The Commissioner can appoint the Hearing Officer, which will make this run a little bit more quickly to take care of the student's interest. And for part-time enrollment, it's the discretion, the school'd enroll a student between 18 and 21. Our entire committee voted to approve this and move this to action item for tomorrow. And is there any question on Two Point One?
I do.
By the way, Sarah Hulak, is she here? Yeah, well, Scott's here, but I have to thank Sarah Hulak, she did a tremendous job on the details. But Scott, if there are any questions, could you please address those?
Sure.
Yeah.
And I don't know that it'll be Scott or Molly, but I think from what I read, this really is a direction that we talked about and proposed previously, that this will expedite any questions and processes, kind of like the Glenn Act is what this would be, to try to help move along if there is a question or dispute, this should expedite that process. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and so it allows at least that I can appoint a Hearing Officer, and we can expedite that, especially with option enrollment. It includes other things, too, but that's part of it, yes.
All right. And then the second action item, Two Point Two, Mr. President, if I can continue?
Please.
This is to approve a contract with ESU 10 to provide an Instructional Coach Facilitator for Loop County Schools. And Frieda Lang is here, if we have any questions. There's a lady that works for the ESU in Grand Island, but it's hard for her to get to Loop County and also work at ESU 10. So, basically, we have a year and a half where she will be on a leave of absence, and she'll work in classrooms in Loop County with individual students and teachers. And the funds will come from state accountability funds, and the reason this is seemed somewhat high, we did question it extensively, Pat's on my group, so we got the details, but it does include her salary, mileage, insurance, retirement, and so it's more than just what it appears. And my committee approved it unanimously. Do you have any questions on this contract for our priority school? Yes, Brad?
Well, I was gonna have Dr. Frey just clarify one thing. So, this person actually had been currently employed by Grand Island Public Schools. ESU 10 had our request, advertised for a position, and once this person became available, that's why we're doing this. We did something similar at ESU 1 in working with Santee, and we found that to be quite an important part of our priority school support, so. Does that cover it, Deb?
Yes, as a Grand Island's finest teacher.
Yeah.
And as I said in our committee, we're talking not just turning around these schools, but creating sustainability. And after a year and a half, if I'm, you know, if I'm correct, there'll be always opportunities for renegotiation if they need further help. And then discussion item, we did discuss our transition plan, and I just wanted to give a couple of highlights. See, now Frieda's not here, but I did want to thank her for everything she's done for our domain. She's really, as brought up in our meeting, kids can't learn if they're hungry, so kudos to her for her past contributions. If Melody Hobson was here, and of course, Pat's here, well, no, Pat's not here yet, but step up to quality, we talked how we're going to continue to be supporting early childhood. And in the future, for our committee, we want to make sure we're in alignment with our strategic plan and supportive of mobile students and providing opportunities that were discussed in regard to like expanded learning opportunities. And then I've challenged my board members to seek additional partnerships to further our efforts. And in the future, we'll be working to continue the personal learning plans, maybe even having an app for the student, so they can carry the plan with them. And that is all. Any questions?
Yep. Mine's simple. I just, maybe I was sleeping when you said it. On the estimated cost of the Instructional Coach Facilitator, that will, besides the salary and the benefits, that will include resources that the school needs, I'm assuming, as well? Possible resources?
At this point, that instructional facilitator's only asked for a computer, and the school was not able to provide her a computer. The rest of the materials should be part of what the school itself would have.
Okay.
As we want her to, so to speak, be kind of incorporated into their staff, but we're paying for it.
Okay, thank you.
And she will be driving back and forth, as I understand, to Grand Island, that's why it's a little higher than our Santee.
Sometimes, and sometimes she's trying to find some alternate housing near the community. She had even talked about buying a trailer.
Thank you.
So, that cost would be within that $179?
That was our offer.
Mileage, everything?
Yes, that was our offer to her.
Okay, thank you.
And then also tell them how many days that is.
The contract is written for 270-some days, as we put a time there, but our understanding with her is that she would be considered as, so to speak, any of their faculty, and it would be more days than that than she would be working.
Okay.
And back to you.
Thank you. Okay, I will give you the Policy Committee report. We discussed revisions to B8. This is the policy, bylaw, and position statement development and the revisions. We have talked about this for a while, and we're still defining bylaws, policy, and position statements, and how they affect the end of E-staff and their direction, and also the State Board. This will be brought before the full board as an action item in March. So, we'll get that out to you. We discussed revisions to B17, which is Hearing Officers. The revisions align with the language being proposed in Rule 19. This is kind of on hold because the Rule 19 has, until that's been adopted by the governor, that's in statute now. And so that will come back later as an action item. We discussed revisions to B12, public participation at board meetings. B12 currently has a reference to B11, which was changed in September of 2016, and we just need to change the language in B12 so it is aligned with B11. And we continue to discuss the reorganization of the Policy Reference Manual, and we're hoping that things will flow a little smoother, and bylaws will be well-defined, and position statements will be well-defined, and policy. Lisa?
There was a portion of B12, that's the one you're on, right?
Mm-hmm.
Where we delete something that's already in B11?
Mm-hmm.
And so, did they need to know about that as well?
Yeah, that's what I was referring to.
Oh, okay.
And when Scott has the language, we'll get that out to everybody, so they can see what it is. Okay. All right, and then we have, as I said, we're gonna move a couple of things. The Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee met for the first time today. This is a new committee, and we're still kind of evolving as to what agendas are going to be and how often we will meet, so we will keep you informed of that. And I think we're going to take a short break, and then we'll come back, because our two next things are gonna take some time. next things are going to take some time. Come back from our break and go on with our standing committees and our next standing committee is a report from the Budget and Finance Committee. John.
Thank you very much, Pat. I greatly appreciate it. Also want to thank the committee members that we had for a very outstanding meeting this morning. Two topics that we'll talk about today is, number one, is the action item, which is to award innovation grants to recommended applicants for the 2016-17 Innovation Grant Fund Program. We'll ask Dean Falkers to come up and give us a quick summary in regards to the history of this program and where he'd like to go with it with the board. Also, I'd like to mention the board voted unanimously to approve this action item. Thank you, Dean.
All right. Greetings. Good afternoon. So, the history is a short one with regard to this particular program because this is the first time that we have awarded grants under this program. So let me provide a brief description. In fact, you're receiving two documents. One is an executive summary of the grant program and the second are the recommendations from the process. So, first, in 2015, the legislature authorized and created, if you will, the Innovation Grant Program. And essentially, the idea was to provide awards to school districts, groups of school districts, consortias, educational service units to identify and develop innovative strategies to benefit education in Nebraska with ultimately the goal to somehow move that into a sustainable funding stream in TOSA upon the authorization of the State Board of Education that those particular practices or innovations were rooted in evidence and were worthy or considered best practice. And so, we went down the path of creating the grant program. We modeled it after the Invest in Innovation Program, which is actually a federal program, but we modified it and made it Nebraska's. That program really was about creating an opportunity for innovations to be created and providing resources to do so, but one of the key things that was essential is that from the beginning of the grant project, that there was a strong evaluation tied to it, so that it was rooted in truly an evidence-based practice. So by the end of the effort, that there was a legitimate demonstration of whether or not the activity, the practice, the resource was in fact innovative and could be replicated and scaled. And so, we had the process this past fall. We had two steps. The first step was a pre-application where it's really sort of a way for districts and applicants to float an idea, to share, instead of going to all of the work of putting together a full-fledged application before they got any feedback. And so, they did, went through the pre-application process. We provided feedback. Our reviewers provided suggestions for improvements. Some decided not to go to the full application based upon the responses. Others went ahead and completed the work. So, we then moved into the full application process. The full applications, we ended up with 18 applicants for a total of around $17.6 million in requests from those 18 applicants. The lottery funds are the source that is used to fund this particular program. And so, one of the things that we also tied to this is instead of doing a one-year grant where by the time you get the money, you start getting ramped up, you've got to implement it, it really is too short for a true innovation. And so, we created an option for these grants to be up to 30 months. That would create a chance for districts to begin actually implementing innovation and complete the evaluation. And so, the 30-month process allowed us to have a total of around $7.8 million over those three years from the proceeds of the lottery funds to move this particular work forward. So, that's kind of the history and the process of the innovation grant process. One of the things that we, this actually was on the agenda in January and we tabled it, and a big part of the reason that we tabled it was because of the fiscal uncertainty that surrounds us. And so, part of that picture has become a little bit more clear as to what is available and what we may need to do. And there's also another piece of this puzzle that a use of the funds actually can be for supporting the college entrance exam, the ACT. And so, that was a part of the discussion in the Finance Committee is the, doing the sort of fiscally responsible role of taking a portion of the lottery funds, setting aside for insurance, if you will, that we could move part of that forward. What that ultimately did is reduce the total number of grants that we could award because there's only so much resources. And so, part of what you have before you are the five recommended applicants. These were the top-scoring applicants from our pool of 18 that would make up the available resources to provide once we've taken out the budgeted resources for the coming biennium to support the college entrance exam. But we also would like to, and are promoting this sort of idea that pending what happens in the future, there may be some opportunities for us to not use that money and repurpose that back into the Innovation Grant Program. But we also are working on creating, we haven't come up with a perfect name yet, but it's an Innovation Partner Summit is what our latest work or description is. But the idea is that a lot of these applications were really innovative approaches and ideas. And so, if there was a way for us to bring potential funders with the applicants and to share and create this opportunity of ideas sharing, and maybe there could be a match for some support or partnership for some of those projects to be funded or supported in some way, shape, or form. So, wanted to demonstrate that we're committed to the fiscal nature of the situation that we're in, but also committed to innovation and continuing to move through on projects that would help support and be replicable, scalable, and support ultimately innovation in Nebraska education. So, I will stop there to see if there are questions or clarifications that you may have.
Any questions?
I have a question. Are you going to give us a breakdown of how much funds towards each?
Yes.
Program?
Yes.
Is it on another document?
So, the actual board and those documents will be put up into your e-meetings. This is sort of an opportunity to give a deeper dive and understanding of where we are, but ultimately, the total of these five is around $4.6 million?
Are they being put up now? Or, I mean, I'm just curious if each project, do you have that breakdown for each project?
I don't have it right now, but I can get it for you before.
Because you want us to take action on this tomorrow. That's what's being proposed.
That's correct.
So, I guess that would be helpful to have in case there's questions about, you know, that's one piece of the puzzle that's missing here. It's, these are great ideas and great concepts, but I have no idea how much it's going to be.
We did, we did get this this morning and I just passed you a copy of that.
Thank you.
One thing I wanted to note was that these were ranked, you had a ranking system that you used to reach the decision on which ones of these you wanted to fund, and that seemed very appropriate from what we heard this morning. And again, you know, those were the, you can see the ranks on there as well as the amounts that were allocated.
John.
I'd like to add as well, in our committee, Rachel, that we had discussed, you know, what would it look like to have some schools with smaller amounts of money? And we went back to that ranking system and trying to keep consistency there, prevalence as you might want to say. So, we were pleased in the end as a committee with the direction that Dean and his folks took.
One thing I forgot to add, if I may, we did provide sort of bonus points for applicants that had matching, that leveraged outside resources to help support the grant. And there were several of them. In fact, one of them even had 100% match.
Wow.
And so, so it created a significant opportunity for us to leverage. And so, in our information that we're working on, we want to highlight that because this is truly about public investment, but it's also about the opportunity for the investments from, from the private sector as well.
Go. I'm really excited about the Educational Service Unit Coordinating Council's 1.640 million grant application. So, did they have a matching in kind grant?
There was some matching resources that they did put forth in that particular grant.
Okay. And then, just two questions, if you can go a little more detail on that, is I know that some of my local teachers are hoping, if something like this came about, that there would be a way to safely and securely, on a statewide level, incorporate necessary data that could be used with identifiers in a classroom. I know that on some things, you want to mask the identity of the students. Do you anticipate this grant, developing this, I guess it's called D2 tails, D2 tails? Is it going to also include the formative assessments for teachers?
So, this particular grant, and I'm not clear on the full details.
It's just a single sign-on portal.
It won't focus in on the formative assessment piece, but there are mechanisms and systemic pieces around that that could help ensure security and integration with the single sign-on approach.
I know that some of the, some of the school systems, if we don't do it statewide, they'll start doing it compartmentalizing and then it won't talk to the advisor. So, I just hope whoever the geniuses are, including you, that as this goes through the ASU Coordinating Council, they're really making it easy to integrate the formative assessment pieces. So, I just know teachers, a lot of times if they, if it's too hard to integrate the information, they just won't use the advisor in the classroom. And that's really what we want, is improve instruction in the classroom level, I mean, ultimately, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I have several questions now that I got some more information. And just help me walk through the understanding here. I guess I'm always interested in things such as, how does this equate to number of students that may benefit from this particular process or project, or understanding the differential between the concept and the implementation within the project? So, for example, the amount of $827,000 for Scotts Bluff for the, versus the $107,000 for Platts Smith for two programs that, just in this quick reading, sounds like they have some similarities. Can you help differentiate between some of the costs within the program? And then, are there, as we look through the programs for each of these that are recommended, any student achievement benchmarks that are expected as a part of the outcomes of the project? What specific outcomes are you looking at in that 30-month period of time?
Yeah. So, two-part question, so let me break it into two parts. So, the first part related to, essentially, it's about the scale, right? It's about how did one who's doing something similar cost more than the other? And so, really, the difference between the two was really about the scope of what they were attempting to accomplish as well as where they were in their maturity piece of that proposal. Tied to that, and sort of leading into the second part of your question with regard to evaluation, what are the metrics of measurement and outcomes and success? A critical piece, almost a third of the application, was really about the evaluation and the critical importance of that evaluation being built off. And the critical importance of that evaluation being built off a sound logic model. And it creates an opportunity for the evaluation plan itself to identify the metrics of identifying success. We also had some, in fact, every one of these have a third-party evaluator that's tied to it, so that we can ensure that there's an element of continuity. We built into the program part of that, essentially, a window for us to work with the applicants, the successful applicants, to refine and ultimately approve the evaluation plan before they begin. So, we knew that during the grant process, they're doing the best that they can in creating that and identifying those particular metrics of measurements, whether it was academic outcomes, whether it was engagement, whether it was, depends on the particular applicant based upon their approach. But we wanted to make sure that we tighten that up from the beginning and clarify the expectations, so that we can ensure continuity and success in evaluation throughout the life of the grants.
So, in that, a part of that process analysis, did you look at things like cost per student served? Do you have that kind of information, like how many students will be impacted by the particular grant? And then, did you look at any sort of analysis in the sense of, you know, the benefit, cost-benefit per student as a part of that particular project?
So...
Any of the projects?
Yeah, so, from a holistic perspective, there was, there was an element of that. And there was a reasonableness factor, if you will, from the evaluator's perspective that we looked at from the budget with regard to the impact of the students. But we also looked at, really focused in on the scalability and replicability of this particular project. And so, ultimately, the per-people cost per se for the innovation was certainly important as a part of this work, but it was also equally important that if this is something that could be replicated without a significant amount of investment or resources later on from a statewide perspective. And so, in that end, kind of the entire state was ultimately the end goal. It was, but it depended on if it was a smaller piece or something that was a little larger in scale, especially from a regional perspective on a couple of these applicants.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just wonder, this came through the Finance Committee, and I wonder if maybe it might have served us better if it come through one of our other committees where we could have had a little discussion about, about really the purpose of the grant and the process that we were going to go through. That might have, might save some questions in the future if this comes back to the committee or to the board.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good question.
Oh, excuse me.
So, I might, I might highlight, there were a couple different things since January that we were concerned about, and I kind of bring you back to the reason that we ended up in Finance Committee. So, I want to kind of walk through that element just again for recollection, say, the first part, obviously, when the, when 930 was passed and said we could use part of the lottery funds for the ACT, or, excuse me, for the college entrance test, of course, now ACT, was included in that legislation. In January, when the proposal to cut our carryover funds on that, it really kind of put us in this position of going, oh, what should we do? Should we reserve those funds for that particular purpose? And knowing it's, you know, trying to be thoughtful about where we are as an agency, should we be reserving those funds? And so, I want to make clear that actually, our recommendation somewhat on the Finance Committee in part was, yes, I think we ought to reserve those funds and not use a portion of it that we could apply for the cost towards ACT, given that. I had a conversation, and a couple different conversations, observing what also was happening at the appropriations level where this came up from a conversation standpoint on whether or not, is there going to be other folks that come, or other bills that get proposed relative to taking significant, I guess, pieces of the lottery funds as well? And so, there's just a whole bunch of moving parts, so I think you're right, especially listening to the conversation today, having that conversation, another committee might have made sense on the content of the bills. But I just wanted to say, there was also this conversation around, oh gee, should we be doing this at all? So...
Rachel. I just have a follow-up to that. I didn't have any issues with it being in the Finance Committee. I think those are just the kinds of questions regardless, that are just important to have an understanding of each of these projects in a little more depth. I think from my view, it's not even so much which committee, but maybe getting additional background information when we make that decision. I feel comfortable what the committee did in vetting the process and bringing these forward. It's just not having maybe a little more background information, even between today and tomorrow, since the committee met today. And just to review and have a little deeper understanding of what it is that we're supporting is why my questions were a little more extensive.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I might as well.
All right.
Dean, quick question for you. This was effective, the LB was effective 15, 2015. Do we have any history of any other innovative grants before these that we could review? Or is this, is this the first bunch?
I might actually...
So, you have a bit of history. There have been lottery grant programs.
In the past, there were different lottery grant programs, but this particular one being effective in 15 was just when the law itself took effect. But the timing of that is actually, the funding is, became available about a year after that before, before we could even implement a process. And so, that, it's a little, yeah, but there isn't, this particular program hasn't existed before, so this is brand new.
Yep. Thank you.
And I, you know, just kind of follow up with Rachel, I do think we, we didn't have this information this morning.
I know.
So, you know, it is important that we, I'm one that keeps asking, you know, when you put something in front of me, if it's a new contract, or renewal of a contract, how did we do? And what, why are we renewing it? And things like that. And I do think it's important that we make sure that the board have as much information as soon as possible, so that, you know, we're all better able to deal with this.
Okay.
Very good.
Anyone else? Okay, John, do you have anything else on the Finance Committee? Okay.
Oh, wait, Finance Committee, yes, we do.
Well, with all of the papers you had spread out this morning on the table in the conference room, I thought there was something else that you wanted to talk about.
Let's talk about the budget. And if I could, have Bryce and Shane come on forward and give us a good summary of the major cuts and projections for the near future.
As they come forward, John, if you don't mind, I'll just kind of highlight what we talked within committee was in part, the report that I shared with the full board around my testimony in front of the Appropriations Committee on LB 22, and what that meant. There's kind of an update, I think Bryce and Shane can give relative to what that happened to be, and what we anticipate now since that point in time. And then, the other thing, I, we talked a bit about LB, I think it's 327, which is the biennial budget proposal from the Governor and the effort within the Appropriations Committee to establish that biennial budget, and at least what we know at this point in time. We will have one more board meeting in March before I have to go testify on our budget over at the Appropriations Committee again. And so, we'll give you this update, so you can have a good sense of where we're at. Doesn't mean a lot of unknowns yet, and a lot of things to watch. So, with that, I thank both Bryce and Shane for their efforts to keep juggling on these topics.
Good afternoon, Board members. Shane Ryan with the Budget and Finance Team. We had approximately $7.3 million in administrative funds that were carried over from the 15-16 fiscal year into the current 16-17 fiscal year. That was in our effort to be good stewards and spend those funds wisely on projects that would advance the Department and the education system. In the Governor's proposed budget, 3.9 million of those administrative funds would be recaptured into the general fund to help balance the budget in the current economic times. Additionally, he has proposed a reduction of 4% across the board in our administrative funds and 4% across the smaller aid programs in Program 158 for education aid. There were no reductions proposed in TOSA or SPED. The Commissioners provided you his testimony to the Appropriations Committee back on January 17th regarding this. Subsequent to that, the Appropriations Committee has restored funding for three programs that had already fully expended the appropriated funds. So, those cuts were restored. And then, the funds for the ESU Coordinating Commission, their percentage of the core services and technology infrastructure aid were also restored to make that whole. Moving forward, that sets a new baseline, if it's adopted by the legislature and signed by the Governor, for the Department's budget going forward into the 17-18 and 18-19 biennium. In addition to the cuts in the current year, the Governor has proposed cutting 4.7% of our administrative funds in Program 025 on education administration. He has provided additional funding for TOSA and SPED and restored a small portion of the aid cut in the other smaller aid programs. But we're looking at essentially about an 8% cut in our operating budget for administrative purposes and helping to lead the education system.
I'd like to have Mark Schultz brief us in regards to the ramifications for vocational rehab.
So, let me start off first with LB 327. In looking at that, there are several items that were added in there. Homeless Career Pathways, which is an existing federal grant program that we have that had not been included previously. So, it's not new money for the Title I program, but another grant program. And then, in addition to that, we asked for an increase in program income, because we have installed a system that helps us do better tracking of those individuals that are on social security benefits. And for those which were able to help reach what's called SGA, now I'm blanking on it, gainful employment. So, it's a certain level. Once they've reached that level, we are eligible to be reimbursed for the expenses that we had on that case. And the last few years, we have been able to increase that amount from a couple hundred thousand dollars to a little over a million a year each of those years. So, we need the authority to be able to expend that additional program income, so that's why we've asked for that. So, for 327, I think we're okay with where we're at there. Looking back at LB 22, there was a reduction. It looked at some carryover funds and, and I think, what was it, 200?
53,000.
253,000 dollars was removed from the carryover. Well, it creates some issues for us because of the difference between the state fiscal year and federal fiscal year and how we manage those funds to match federal dollars. In addition to that, we also had a 4% reduction in the current year. So, that does create some issues for us, but we've been in discussions with Sandy Sostad about how we might be able to use some cash funds that we have not had access to, because we haven't had the authority to do that. And if we can get the authority to use those cash funds to replace the general revenue funds, that will resolve that issue for us. So, we believe and hope that will be the recommendation of the legislature.
I just had a question. You just mentioned the authority to use cash funds. Can you explain how that accumulated?
Sure. It actually is from years ago when vocational rehabilitation had an agreement with Behavioral Health System, and they had what was called a third-party agreement where HHS would put up money to be used for a specific purpose, and that would match federal dollars. The legislature subsequently fully provided the match for those federal dollars, and that was no longer needed. So, there was a period of time those behavioral health funds continued to come in to catch up, and we didn't need those. And so, when I came into this position, there was probably, I think, just under a million dollars that had been accumulated in this cash fund. So, we've since had cash authority over the years to expend some of it, but not all of it. So, there is still some money in there that we can use for this purpose.
How much money is in there right now, do you know?
Gosh, Shane, do you know?
Approximately.
Off the top of my head, I apologize. No. I have a question for Kathy.
Yeah. I'm thinking it's enough to cover the deficit there, so I'm thinking it's probably somewhere around $600,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Rachel, did you have a question?
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Do you have anything else, John? Okay. We'll move on to our last standing committee, legislation. Rachel?
Thank you. The Legislative Committee has met by conference call. We met January, Monday, January 30 via conference call, and then met again today. And we've got several items on our agenda. I'm going to cover just quickly the discussion items and a few items that shouldn't take very long, so we can spend most of our time on the action items that we'll be talking about for tomorrow. A couple of discussion items, we reviewed the 2016 transition plan of what the last Legislative Committee recommendations were, to pick up some of those to move forward. We also, this year, the Legislative Committee will be, each of us will be contacting two senators on the Education Committee to try to really strengthen that relationship between our Legislative Committee and the Education Committee of the Legislature, and try to do that in the next month, and then we'll provide a little more of an update at that time. For action items, there's really a couple of things we did. If you look in your file, you've got one thing, one document you have that Brian has put together, were the positions from the, our January 23 legislative retreat. And so, there's a one-page summary of the actions that we already recommended in January for your information. The other thing that we did do, and we'll talk about that at our conference call, on Monday, we started talking about moving forward, we would try to put some talking points on each of our proposed action, so that we have that institutional memory about why we made a decision to support, to oppose, or to remain neutral. So, as you move forward, you'll start to see more and more some talking points added as we build that out. And so, with that, I'm going to turn over to Brian to walk us through our proposed actions for tomorrow, based on our conference call, and then we'll move to some of the items that we talked about today. So, Brian?
Thank you. Brian Hallstead, Chief of Staff. As Rachel indicated, the State Board Legislative Committee on Monday had a conference call. We spent an hour and a half going through bills on Monday that the committee felt the board should take positions on. This morning, we had another Legislative Committee meeting and spent an hour and 25 minutes to add to the list of bills. So, what I'm going to do is go through the bills. The Legislative Committee is making recommendations to the full board to take positions on tomorrow. The first one is LB 227. It's going to be heard by the Health and Human Services Committee tomorrow afternoon. It creates a brain injury council in the Department over in Voke Rehab. Simply stated, this bill has been around several years. Our Division of Vocational Rehabilitation has been working with senators on that. Senator Wissard has introduced it this session, and is the committee's recommendation that the board once again support a bill like this to create a council. And Mark Schultz has already been, according to the committee, the designated person to go show up in front of Health and Human Services tomorrow afternoon. So, that's largely what LB 227 does, and the committee's recommendation is that the board support this bill with testimony from Mark Schultz.
Is there any questions about the committee's recommendation for LB 227? And that committee action that we're recommending tomorrow for action will be to support with testimony from Mark Schultz.
Brian, when you bring these up, it might be helpful to other board members not on legislation, if you'd say, like, this is page 27 in the document.
Well, actually, this is in its own document by itself. Well, actually, this is in its own document by itself. The bill analysis document that you have attached has even greater detail on it, so...
You've got three items attached in your information. You've got one that's the overall bill analysis, one that's the one-page summary of the action that we took January 23rd. The third item is the recommendations from our conference call and from our legislative meeting.
Okay. So that's the first bill with the recommendation that the Board supported tomorrow. The second bill is LB 357. This is a bill that Senator Bowles introduced. It's going to the Transportation Committee. What it does is it increases fees on titles for vehicles. And in this bill, the first title that's given to an individual for their motor vehicle, one dollar of the fee would go to fund the brain injury that this council is doing. Again, this is a similar one. The Board's Legislative Committee, the consensus was to support the bill with Mark testifying. This one does not have a hearing yet, so we'll have to wait to see. But this is largely a separate bill to raise a fee on titles for vehicles to fund the council that is in LB 227, so.
Is there any questions? The committee had quite a bit of discussion that we don't particularly like the concept of proposing raising a fee. However, we also had conversation about the importance and the lack of some financial support for services for individuals who have suffered brain injuries. And so that was really the discussion around this process, and this is a step that starts to move forward to generate some funds to serve those individuals with those needs. Any comments or questions about LB 357? All right, Brian?
Okay. The next bill was LB 347 that the Transportation Committee already heard this week. This is a bill that the State Board Legislative Committee was made aware of last October. The Department of Motor Vehicles had come to us at the Department of Education in October of 2015 about language currently in statute that requires them to issue a bus permit, which is a zone document. It is not a driver's license or anything else. This was something started, I think, in the 1960s. It is out of date today. They'd like to get it out of statute so that they're not having to issue something. We certainly indicated them. We had no objections with the bill. The bill was heard on the Tuesday, and several testifiers, including the Platte Institute, said the Department was in support of the bill, wasn't quite, hadn't quite catch up to it. So we were recommending, the Board Legislative Committee unanimously is recommending, you support the bill. So if you do tomorrow, we'll send a letter recognizing that we're supportive of reducing government that doesn't need to be in place.
Any questions or comments or committee members if you ever want to add?
You, as a Board, are still responsible for setting the training and qualification requirements of drivers of pupil transportation vehicles. That's Rule 91 that you have. So it doesn't change any of that authority.
Okay. Continue.
The next bill that the committee looked at was one by Senator Mirante that is going to have a hearing next week in government. It allows state employees to volunteer at public schools. It also allows certain nonprofit organizations to do that in the sense of there are a lot of groups out there who do mentoring or extended learning, and they'd like to have the availability of state employees to do that. It's the consensus of the Board's Legislative Committee that you remain neutral on the bill. There are some good things. There are obviously the issues of governmental employees being paid to do volunteer work that are somewhat problematic. We here at the Department of Education in our own internal policy, you can have work flexibility, so your work schedule can be changed such that you can volunteer on your own time and yet still meet your regular work schedule, which is probably, from our perspective, easier to do. But obviously, there are a lot of groups out there that went to Senator Mirante. So the recommendation from the committee is to remain neutral on the bill. There are positives about people working with kids, mentoring, volunteering in schools, but there are other issues that tie into that, so.
Any questions or comments? Okay, continue on.
The other one was LB 153 that will have a hearing before government. And this bill, it impacts you as state Board member. Should it be enacted, you couldn't be a lobbyist for two years after leaving the state Board. So that's what this bill does. It has some language about state employees have to sit out a period of time. Again, the Board's Legislative Committee is recommending just remaining neutral on the bill in that regard. But we felt you needed to see it because any of you who may be leaving the Board in the future would have to sit out two years before you went and got paid to be a lobbyist to lobby the legislature, which I'm not aware of any former state Board member that's ever gone to be a lobbyist. But it would apply to a whole bunch of other elected office, like Attorney General, Governor, all of those people couldn't be lobbyists. So it's an informational item for you.
I suspect this was aimed more at members of the Legislature than anything else. That's all I need to say.
LB 299, it's a bill that Senator Ebbkey introduced. It's going to have a hearing before the government and military. This is an incredibly large bill. It generally creates two new offices of state government, one over the executive branch, one in the legislative branch. It is an attempt to create oversight over all of the executive branch agencies that regulate occupations. And in the bill, teaching and administrative certificates are an occupation. Our private post-secondary career school agents permits, we think, would be covered, but it's not specifically listed as one of them. This is coming from a national organization. It's in response to a number of issues that have arisen across the country of the regulation of occupations. It's based, and some of this is tied to a U.S. Supreme Court decision on litigation out of North Carolina where the very occupation that was being regulated had competing membership on that Board from groups that was regulating the occupation. And the U.S. Supreme Court said there is not immunity for those entities. For you, you regulate as elected officials, teaching profession administrative. The recommendation from the State Board Legislative Committee was that the Board oppose the bill. There wasn't a initial need at this point in time to create more government to regulate this. It may be more an action that the Legislature needs to look at all of the statutes it's put in place to create all these occupational boards. And there's another, there's several other bills that have come in this session, but this one would impact your ability to do the licensing of teachers and also would impact your ability to revoke the certificates of any of those who are unethical. So that's why the State Board Legislative Committee is recommending opposition, that there's no need for additional government control, and there's other ways of addressing this than creating more government. Yes?
Just a quick question. Will a staff member or you go to the hearing and explain in the layman terms just now like you did that it, what it will affect or not affect?
I don't know if I use layman terms. I'm licensed to practice law in Nebraska, so I use legal terms toward you in that regard. This would regulate lawyers too in that regard.
But sometimes they don't get it. And that was so succinct and to the point, I thought that might be a good idea.
I can tell you, I've had conversations with Senator Ebbkey's aide about the bill and pointed out how this would impact an elected constitutional body like the State Board. And there might be some recognition of maybe that's not who we were trying to aim for. So we'll see in that regard, whether it's me or a letter or somebody else, we'll see. Sure.
Any other questions? Okay. Continue on.
So there are several more bills that will be before the Education Committee this session that you didn't cover on January 23rd. LB 608, it's a bill that Senator Lenahan introduced. It's a parental choice scholarship program. It is attempting to take, largely take funding from public school districts and have it go to private schools in that regard. To be eligible for the scholarship, you have to be in a school that is in the lowest performance level, the needs improvement category under Aquest. The consensus of the State Board Legislative Committee was to recommend opposition to the bill. There are other choice mechanisms, and using funding for public education to fund private schools is not the correct. There are a lot of questions as the way the bill is written right now, but the Board's Legislative Committee's recommendation is the State Board oppose the bill tomorrow.
Any questions about LB 608? Okay, continue on, Brian.
LB 630 was a bill that Senator Larson has introduced. It's called the Adopt the Independent Public Schools Act. Any of you who've been on the Board have seen similar bills like this in the past. This time, it's called an Independent Public Schools Act. Prior bills have largely had the title of charter schools or whatever. This bill's different. All of the past bills, either the State Board was the one who got to create the schools or the local school boards have the authority to do this. This one creates its own separate independent commission of state government to handle all of that. And it specifically says any of these independent schools aren't regulated by the Department of Education, and all of that may have some constitutional problems with Article 7, Section 2. That says all, the entire school system of the state of Nebraska falls within the purview of the Department of Education and the State Board. So the committee's recommendation to you is to oppose the bill in that regard.
Any questions or comments? I thought there was going to be discussion, Pat. That's why we moved this to the end, but obviously not yet. Okay.
I'll be on it.
Okay, well, today, the Board's Legislative... Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa.
That's okay.
No, no.
I wondered, just very short, how do you create a separate commission and then have like two of us be on that commission when we're elected from a district?
Well, you would be on this independent commission by virtue of being, the State Board would select two of its eight members to serve on this other commission. So you wouldn't necessarily be, you'd be representatives on that commission, but you wouldn't be the State Board member per se in that regard. You're one of many other members. So how do you do that? You write a bill that says you do that. As to the constitutionality of that is its own separate.
Never mind. I got it. Thank you.
It sounds like it might have a conflict of interest in that particular situation, but you've been very generous in indicating that there, on some of these bills, there was consensus and some there was unanimous consensus. And I just, for the sake of the public, I'd point out that I think those votes on that by this committee, committee members are probably available. And I, while I disagreed on some of these bills, I support the overall decision of the body. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. And I just want to point out that as a part of the process of the committee, we're just making recommendations at this point based on our more extensive discussion and sometimes extensive discussion on some of the bills that as we move forward tomorrow, again, as these come forward for action items tomorrow, we may have additional discussion, and then we'll take an official position at that point. So again, this is not yet taking an official position, but the initial discussion.
I believe, if I remember correctly, the hour and a half conference call got through eight bills, and this morning's Legislative Committee is bringing you four more bills that took an additional hour and 25 minutes of discussion in the committee. So it wasn't quite this quick in the committee. There was some extensive discussion by all the Board members on all of these bills. All right, so LB 650, this is a bill that Senator Lenahan introduced. It puts into statute further authority for the issuance of certificates. The bill largely recognizes other ways in which individuals can be issued certificates. It's largely, the bill largely says if you have a college degree and you pass an exam, you can get this kind of certificate. It's largely what it's doing. There was a lot of discussion this morning by the Board and the committee about the need to look at alternative pathways to getting in to becoming a teacher or an administrator. Some of that is already reflected in some of the permits that are available in Rule 21. There was unanimous consensus of the committee to recommend staying neutral on the bill, but pointing out the need to, maybe the Board needs to look at other alternative pathways that the law may permit them to do. There were several permits that currently exist in Rule 21 that appear to do the exact same thing the bill is trying to do. And also the point of continuing the discussion about how current law may give flexibility to the Board to look at this without more statutes. So it's the recommendation of the State Board, the unanimous recommendation of the State Board Legislative Committee to remain neutral on the bill, but appreciate the conversation and ongoing dialogue of how we may deal with additional pathways for others to become teachers in Nebraska.
I would like to add to that, and I don't know if any of my colleagues do. I mean, this was a very in-depth conversation we had on this, that we do believe that this is a time for us to really understand what are the multiple pathways into teaching and how do we recognize opportunities? We had discussion about individuals that do teach in other states or are certified in other states and maybe didn't go through a process with the same kind of training that we expect or through approved college program. And we just had a lot of discussion that this really is something we probably should. So I think as a committee, we would recommend this going to probably educate our effectiveness to really take a look at Rule 21 and start, not wait till the Legislature figures out what they're going to do, but let's take a look at what we can do. Because I do believe we had a pretty in-depth discussion that maybe there's some opportunities and changes that we should be proactive on as opposed to reactive from legislation. My colleagues, do you want to add anything to that? Okay.
The only other thing I would add, that the Board looked at LB 103 earlier that Senator Blood had, and staff was neutral on that bill at the hearing to point out that you're always looking for greater flexibility. And there are new issues that arise every day that you have the authority to look at and provide the flexibility, so. The next bill that the committee is bringing forward to you is LB 651. It's by Senator Lenahan. It's Adopt the Nebraska Reading Improvement Act. This bill looks very similar to prior bills that had been introduced. I think the last time Senator Larson introduced this, the prior time before that, it was Senator Lattenbaugh. Thank you. I knew it was an L, I couldn't remember, from Omaha. It has a whole number of features in it. It looks similar to laws other states like Florida and Indiana have in place. It was the unanimous consensus of the Board Legislative Committee to recommend opposition concerns in the bill about holding back students who aren't proficient. It adds additional bureaucracy and cost, both at the state level and at the local school district level to do this. But the Board members did want to point out, this does focus on the need for early-grade reading proficiency, recognizes the importance of other expanded learning opportunities, and some of this may actually align to some of your vision and direction and goals you've set in the next 10 years. But it was the unanimous recommendation that you oppose the bill.
Brian, I spoke with you last year about one that was similar to this, and one of the big concerns was all quite a bit mandated testing. Does this still hold true in this bill?
There is a requirement that school districts do either a state-approved assessment locally developed or a state test to measure as to the reading level. So I mean, there's, our school... So, I mean, there's, our school districts right now are already using assessment instruments in that regard. NWEA MAPS is being used all the time. So, it's not, it may not necessarily be a new test. The bill does require us to approve that assessment, which is a new function. The difference is MAPS is being used right now, so teachers can help understand where students are, adapt instruction. This one, you'd use it ultimately to maybe withhold the student's advancement at the third grade level if, in fact, they aren't proficient. And that's always been a concern, that a single test can't really measure what's best for the student. And advancement from grade level to grade level is always its own problem and concerns with families and unique situations. So, that's.
Pat, do you have a comment?
I'm not totally unsympathetic with this, but somehow we've decided that third grade is that magical point where kids are either going to read or fail to read in the future. And it just seems to me that, you know, I think we need to do these interventions. We need to do these assessments at a much earlier level than third grade to find out that somebody's not, not learning to read or got a disability or an issue. And that's, that was really my primary concern about this. I, like I say, I have some sympathy with the thought process, but, you know, to just say it's third grade or else, that doesn't make sense to me. I think we've got to do it much earlier. We've got to find out whether these kids can read much earlier.
Any other, okay, continue.
And the final, no, excuse me, the bill, LB 662, that Senator Lennahan introduced, it establishes a grading system for schools. What it says is by August 1st of 2020, the State Board would establish an accountability system, and it would have five levels instead of four like AQuest. The bill actually, in some ways, prescribes mathematically how you would have to establish each of those levels and how you would use test scores mathematically to put schools and districts in each of the five categories. It was the consensus of the Legislative Committee to oppose the bill, and obviously with testimony probably by the Commissioner and maybe Board members on this. Lots of discussion about all the work that had been done by the Board to establish AQuest. That wasn't just money. It was also time and effort, getting input from lots of people on that. A recognition there needs to be a further conversation with not only Senator Lennahan, but other elected officials. We've done AQuest and we put it out there, but as we were doing that, I heard this Board say, "We're not done. This thing is going to have to be refined moving forward." So, that's part of the conversation that they think needs to continue. It was pointed out that we're limited to only three priority schools, and that was the challenge. The Commissioner told you last January when he recommended only three, because there may have been others. And there's also a financial issue that ties along with it. Well, if not three, but five, that's more resources, more time and effort and everything else, so those come into it. And just noting, like I said, the considerable time, not only, and the expenses. And also the recognition that right now in LB 22, the Legislature's taking back some of the funding they provided for you to do accountability. So, that ongoing discussion about what is our financial commitment to helping all these schools improve. So, again, the recommendation was to oppose the bill, but also recognize the ongoing building of AQuest isn't done. It's an ongoing process and conversation with other elected officials about what type of accountability system and what is our response to any of the schools that are in A, B, C, D, or F if the bill were enacted.
Pat, I think, Pat, and then Molly.
Again, you were generous in saying consensus. And with that said, I recognize, I think, that there are folks that truly believe that we need to, we need to change the grading system as we're doing it from what we're doing right now. On the other hand, kind of trip over my tongue and go backwards in the opposite direction, we almost have a de facto grade of F right now if you think about the fact that we do have our three priority schools. They, you know, I, without trying to offend anybody, and I probably will, that's, those are our F categories right now. And the other point I'd like to mention, and is one that my colleague John Whittsoe brought up this, this earlier today, and I think it argues for leaving things the same, at least for the, for the near future, is that in many ways, our, our current system is very much compatible with the new ESSA law. And, and also the fact that, I'm really talking against my vote almost here, and I apologize, but also the fact that much of what we've done over the last year as far as the strategic plan is very much based on, on, on the AQuest system that we have right now. As, you know, and that's a 10-year outlook. So, with that said, you know, maybe I should go back and reconsider my vote, I guess. But by, by the same token, you know, to just arbitrarily go to A through F or A through E, however you want to grade, do it, grading system does have the potential of causing a major disruption to what we're doing, what we're going to do. And there will be financial consequences if we have to go back and redo this whole accountability system. So, you know, I feel bad I voted the way I did, but anyway, thank you.
You'll have an opportunity tomorrow to vote again when we formally vote on this. Molly, you had a comment?
I just wanted to very, make a very strong comment that this classification, A through F, just really takes that whole school, the district, in that classification. And some of our most challenging environments are ones with highly mobile students, large proportion of English language learners, maybe, maybe a high minority or poverty. And to just brand them with a letter grade, let's say of F, without an indication of hope, seems to be opposite of our intention with AQuest, which is about continuous improvement and sharing best practices. And in my area of the state, if classifications were made into letter grades, there's not a lot of alternatives. I, and I think when we visit with our legislative members representing our districts, maybe we should listen to them and share a little bit about AQuest, because I actually think some of them don't even know what AQuest really is.
I think that's, a lot of our discussion was around, we need to create some sort of a document that helps us give that two-minute elevator speech about AQuest to help people better understand AQuest. I think the, some of the discussion that I think is important and we've already talked about, but, but we can't go to a two-process system like we had before. In the past, with no child left behind, we had two different kinds of systems of accountability, and it was just utter confusion. We haven't quite got past that confusion yet, so the last thing we need to do is add a layer of confusion in that, in that process. And I do think there are elements, again, in this bill that look at, at, for example, what we have for raw classification. So, I think, again, it's, it's helping people understand what we have in AQuest and what those opportunities are, and that maybe we're not that far apart. But again, it's, it's how we interpret things, how we communicate things, so. Commissioner?
I suspect I get to be the one to go over and testify on this one, so.
I believe that was the.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I didn't sit through that committee meeting, so I'm just guessing. But, no, I mean, I think there are opportunities to talk about what we've really done within AQuest. And if you look at the measures in which we did build raw classification on, they're not terribly different from what they're prescribing or suggesting within this bill. I do think there's something about labeling on A through F that is problematic. And I understand those that say, hey, look, we want to clearly be able to articulate to parents in public how schools are doing. And so, I think we have work to do on that front. So, and I think we all agree with that, that how we display data and how we explain that to the public is a really important thing. But, so it's finding a balance between how we explain it to the public and how we motivate schools to improve and how we provide that theory of action and support system to make that happen. And that's what we're trying to do within AQuest. And I suspect, we've actually spent more time on, on trying to make sure the schools understand what we're doing. That's been a lot of our communication effort, because I saw it as winning the hearts and minds of educators, to convince them that a model of accountability could be something other than just simply labeling. And we have done that work, and I think we've done that work very effectively with, with our schools. We do have this work to do with legislators and, and the public at large to talk about the importance of how we tie those, those two systems together. So, I see this as an opportunity to do that. I'm sure I, you know, to oppose a bill of a committee member is always a difficult thing to do, but I actually want to engage in a conversation with the committee and, you know, take that moment in time to go, what do you want to accomplish? Because I think that'll be good feedback for us.
And I would say that the committee had a lot of discussion between being neutral and opposing, in the sense that there, there are elements that are not that far apart. There are elements that we think we concur that we need to move forward, just maybe not in the same manner. And I think probably the most important discussion we had, I believe, I'm speaking for the committee, that we really feel we need more than three priority schools to be identified. And that if, if we can figure out the opportunity to expand the number of schools that are identified as priority schools to help more schools that are priority and needs improvement, that that's an important thing for us to do as well. Would you say that's pretty much captures our conversation?
And the Learning Community presentation this morning reaffirmed that feeling for me, and I think it was Patsey saying she's been in schools that are 50% mobility. It's hard to have accountability if you have 50% kids moving in and out. So, in, if priority is our fifth class, we definitely want to provide support for more than just the three types of priority schools we've established so far.
And I, and I'd just say, the bottom line to me is we've got 85 schools that are needs improvement, and, you know, whether we classify three as priority or maybe we ought to have 15 or 20 as priority, but those are the schools that really need our, our urgent help. And by, by doing something with all of those schools, we'll end up achieving an awful lot of what we're looking for as far as our strategic plan over the next 10 years, and that's the most important thing.
Brian, please, continue. We're not quite done yet.
The last bill that the Board's Legislative Committee looked at and brings forward to you, it's LB 595. It's a bill introduced by Senator Grony. One of the Board members said, "Well, this wasn't in our January 23 retreat document." Well, at that time, the bill had been referred to the Judiciary Committee. Since that time, it's now been referred to the Education Committee. And to be fully transparent, Senator Chambers has a motion that they haven't gotten to yet to recommit it back to the Judiciary Committee. So, in the sense of this bill, it hasn't yet maybe found a home or has found a home. The bill provides language and amends the Student Disciplinary Act, the Legislature enacted in 1994, to add two new sections that deal with any student who becomes physically violent, that teachers or administrators can use force against that student to protect themselves, to protect other students, and in limited circumstances, protect property. There was, the Board took this up at 9:30 and 26 minutes later finally decided to remain neutral on the bill with staff testimony. There was a lot of discussion, both pro and con, the need for language, the strategies that are in place now and everything else. And so, you can see the three bullet points I attempted to capture from a 26-minute conversation amongst Board members. So, the recommendation is that the Board remain neutral on the bill.
But any, Pat, and then Molly.
Well, again, you generously said consensus. I, I really, you know, I, I would support this, and I know the committee's done otherwise, but I feel like I need to speak to it. And I think that, you know, when our, when our teachers are, are in a position where they, they're being threatened, when the classrooms are being disrupted, when we have so little ways of responding to violent individuals, I think we need to do something. Now, does it need, does the bill probably need to have some improvements made? Certainly. And, you know, Rachel and others made some really good points on, on some issues. But the bottom line to me is that I, I, I think that the principals and the teacher should have more ability to respond to these dangerous situations and promote the welfare of all the children in the class rather than deal just with one disruptive child.
I like it that we have on one of our bullet points, the first one there, needs to be an understanding of how to effectively intervene in behavioral situations, which is something that I think each of our local Boards, local school boards and districts need to decide how best they are going to deal with behavioral issues. And the one piece that very much concerns me really in the end, as I continue to review this, is liability issues that the school district can be up against, the teacher can be up against, the district can be up against, the Board. There's just a lot of unknowns in this whole entire bill. But again, I, I say, this starts the conversation of what is going on out there in the classroom, because teachers are being hurt. Students are being hurt because of behavioral issues that are, become out of control.
I had a little bit of passion on this one, but I do want to say that the first bullet point about behavior, when it's escalated to violence, you've missed a lot of opportunities for teaching and developing relationships and learning. Sometimes, I shared something with Pat Tim. There was a little leprechaun preschool in North Platte that said if there are behavioral problems, you have one-on-one. If there are issues, you bring the parents in, you make a plan. Because I think some students, and Senator Grony has a good point about this, some students are not from backgrounds that, that promotes civil discussion and talking. It's who has a bigger fist. I actually think making a law to allow physical force is, is probably unnecessary. I'm, I voted neutral because I think the conversation is important. However, when you do your testimony, I think it might be good to remind the group that there are statutes in place where a teacher can defend himself or herself if, if a child is a threat to him, another student, or the environment. That's already in statute. And also, I, I call this, Commissioner, please, at some point, could we have someone come in here and talk to the Board about the three tiers for mental health and behavioral supports? Because I think sometimes people don't realize, for instance, if you get to that top tier where the kids are out of control, in my area of the state, it's 100 miles for a psychiatric, pediatric psychiatrist to deal with these issues. So, just kicking the kid out of the classroom is not going to solve that at-risk kids' problem. And that at-risk is going to be a member of our society. Is it every student, every day? And if it is, I'm not saying we can solve all the problems, but I definitely hear from my local school board members, behavioral issues probably be dealt with earlier than later when they erupt in violence.
This is, one second, Pat. This is one that had we had more than 26 minutes, we would have definitely used that time. Because we also look, this is an example, Bill, of what we do do as a full Board during the retreat or just as a Legislative Committee. We do look at what positions our policy partners are taking. And sometimes we try to think about taking a position that may be the same as a policy partner, but that's not necessarily going to influence our decision based on our discussion. We think that it's important for us to make a decision based on how we perceive the bill and how we perceive the implementation of the bill. And there were so many elements that came in. There are some elements that we concur are important and we need to figure out how to support. There are other elements, I'd say, some of us would say we would. There are other elements I'd say, some of us would say we would oppose, because we had, we were all over the map on it. And I think that's it, for, you know, in the sense that there was a statement that the bill allows or provides, a teacher may remove a student from class under specified conditions, and prohibits the principal from returning the student to class without the teacher's consent. What is that all about? What would be specified conditions? You know, and that led us to, we also feel strongly that we cannot deny children in public education with an education. And when you start to exclude children from classrooms, you're excluding them from public education. And so I think that isn't, there's so many elements that come into play. We felt that it's more important that we take a neutral stance, and that in that stance, we do though, continue this conversation, continue how do we lead within our responsibilities as board members to help address the issues that are out there with students with behavioral challenges and behavioral needs.
Pat?
Well, I, I appreciate two things you said. One, that, you know, we're here for education, and also that, but I don't think that this discussion, this, this discussion continues to happen in our classroom, in our, who we are. And this discussion should be happening in a lot of our partners, Health and Human Services, the judicial system, so on and so forth. And it also needs to have some discussion in our business community because of capacity. It's exactly what Molly said. You cannot find a pediatric psychiatrist outside of our bigger metropolitan areas. And this has been going on, I've been on more committees that have talked about this for the last 20 years. And until, and maybe that's where we come in, until we get more assertive with our partners and say, who needs to be at the table, and who's going to talk about this? Because, I mean, some of these things that we're asking for in behavioral health, we don't even have the capacity in our higher learning to give people that degree. So they go out of state, if they want to get involved in it, well, then they don't come back. You know, I mean, it's just, it's very difficult. So I, I think we need to maybe, as you said, continue this conversation, but take it outside our classroom.
Thank you, Pat. What a great conversation. I commend the, the Board. I mean, this has just been fantastic in regards to hearing the balances and the pros and cons of this particular bill. But what's interesting is Molly brought up so elegantly about behavioral problems, if you will, behavioral concerns in our schools. I think if you'll talk to any of the administrators, that's probably one of their major problems, concerns, is identifying behavioral issues very, very early, just like we talk about reading problems, learning problems at a real early age. Behavioral may be one of those priorities also.
Absolutely. And, and I want to kind of loop back to our discussion earlier about the change in certification for guidance counselors. I mean, I think we have work we need to do and think about as it relates to the structure of education today. The position of guidance counselor is not typically trained to really deal with the behavioral issues and concerns, but in many of our schools, that's about the only resource that's there. That, and sometimes a special education teacher, who also may not be trained in dealing with mental health issues and behavioral issues. So I do think that this bill brings forward an issue that, that we shouldn't put our head in the sand. I'm not sure this is the solution for the issue. But I think, again, that puts us in a level of leadership to think through, what are some of the things that we should look forward? What are the things that we control that we could help change to help address this particular need in a different way?
I'm sorry, I will make this real short, but this is something I haven't said out loud, but I wanted to say. Some of our kids, when I went to that education health summit, they were talking about the toxic environment some of these children live in, when there's true domestic violence, that they're actually just, it's fight or flight at home. And as a teacher personally, I always wanted to make my classroom a place where everyone felt safe and secure, and that was one place you can feel mutual respect. If this becomes law, some of these kids from highly toxic environments will leave a toxic environment and go to school afraid that it's just one more place they're going to More violence, so that's all I have to say about that.
If I could bring up just one other point about the counselors, I think the standard counseling ratio, student to counselor, is like 100, I think the standard's 150 to one. And in some cases in schools, it's over 250 to one. So our counselors are really stretched to the, the limit in regards to what they can do besides career counseling, school counseling, college counseling, now possibly behavioral counseling.
As you notice, the, a resource for the committee just left. So I think this was our last, our last bill of discussion. So anything else from the committee?
Good job.
Back to you, Pat.
All right. Well, I will take that as a, must be time to, for me to say, is there anything else for the good of the order? And yes, I have one thing. I'm to remind you that tomorrow morning at 8:15, you are to go downstairs in this building to lower Level B, and we will all have our picture taken.
Right.
So put on your best spit and polish and be there. And if there is nothing else, I will announce that the regular, the regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will reconvene at 9:00 AM tomorrow in this room. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for all your work.